Hi, Gene.
Hey.
How are you doing?
Doing fine, Commissioner.
Good to see you. Congratulations on your appointment.
For what?
What's your appointment due?
Uh, so I'm in Cleveland Committee, based out of Cleveland.
Okay, yeah.
We're going to run about that.
Yeah, I guess so.
Uh, well, we've got you on the table here to talk about economic development.
Yep.
We'll come on up and, uh... You want us to come down to the table or you guys standing right there?
We'll have a conversation here. Basically, thank you Commissioners for agreeing this evening. Um, back in August, I submitted a... I hesitated calling a letter, more likely monograph, to the Granger Herald to the creation note, but yeah, gracious enough to publish it. Means they must have sold a lot more advertising that week, right? He's looking at it. Um, and, um, everybody I talked to said, "Yeah, you're right." But nobody had an idea. So basically, I'm in today to give you, basically, to say, "Hi, the issues have not changed." Um, you know, you need to choose something, and I'm just in here just to urge you to say, "Just pick some plan somewhere doing something that has been..." When you look at this stuff, something that a generally speaking, someone with some economic development experience would tell you would probably stand some chance of working. That's it. So, hi, what are you guys going to do?
Well, it's obvious, uh, and we've given the state of the county a couple places. We're going to give it a couple more times, but it obviously shows, Gene, that the most impact we can make for the county is through the sales tax. And the interest has gone down, the, uh, you know, the property tax is 35 percent that's brought in into the county.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's what it, what it is. And, uh, the rest of the things, uh, the sales tax is the one we have to move the most.
Right.
Um, we have gone out, in fact, uh, back in 2003 and '04, you and I went out there and was staying and, uh, looked for the John Brady site grant. We were successful that time, and since then, they sort of moved, shifted from the funds we were using to another firm, and two times it didn't pan out. I know Shonda is having discussions with, uh, other villages and, uh, different areas, especially, you know, like the state line area.
Yeah.
In Lewisburg, all along the, uh, with the, uh, transportation port, or if you will.
Okay.
We've met with, well, Denise and I were in the group, Chris was sick, and they developed a coalition. And they consistently tell, tell us that, uh, you know, they like, they like to see us, and they like for us to update us. And they said, besides the Montgomery County Commissioners, that they see all the time of the region, the 14-county region or whatever, that we're the ones that get over there the most.
Okay.
And I just happened to see Jeff Hoagland in Washington DC this past week, and they're getting ready for the Dayton building coalition flying in. We started doing that, Chris went last year along with Shonda, and just to see our legislators to keep, keep funds coming at the local level where, where we need funds around here.
Okay.
And obviously, you know, the, the state of Ohio's done a great job in trying to be more competitive and level the playing field with the, with the states that surround us. And, uh, I think they've done a pretty good job of that, and, and Shonda showed us leads that she's been getting from the state of Ohio, that back in, I'm going to just go off the top of my head here, back in 2010, there was like 22 leads from the state.
Okay.
Last year, there was like 50, and in 2012, oh, 2011, there was 50. So it shot up a good bit, but this past year, there's like 82, I think, that's what I'm, I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's in the state of the county, but...
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to say is the state has postured themselves to be competitive, and the Dayton region, as you might well know, actually this past week, uh, was the number one region in the United States for the Inside Development Magazine for bringing in new job creation.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, well, as you guys said back when I first started in '03, now we can start economic development in this, in this county. And obviously, we, we tripped up in '05, I guess, and, um, we didn't have economic development for a while. And, uh, but we tried to start back because when Chris and Bob actually got in office, the elected officials said to us, "What are you guys going to do to be able to sustain the revenue coming into this county so that we can operate our offices as we need to?"
Okay.
And then obviously, '08 came, and then, uh, you know, we tried to cut, it didn't happen. In '09, Chris and Bob came in doing, there was going to be severe cuts, along with the elected officials worked with us wonderfully. But in this day and time, things are starting to come back, slowly, but they're coming. And we need to be prepared here in this county, and I think we have them, we are prepared, and Shonda is working. And we are getting, we're going to be, going to the state here one of these days and meeting with our, our legislators up at Columbus. And once again, Senator Bill Deagle serves on the Ed... Economic Development Committee, he's the chairman there. So we're going to keep in close contact with him so that we can continue to be at the table when, when things go wrong.
Okay. Two things that, one, you still need locations for these places to go to.
Yes.
So you mean, that means classically, water sewer within eye shot of the interstate, maybe a certain amount of land. They prefer green space, unfortunately, okay, as opposed to a previously used site. Um, and so, you know, that means basically, you've got that road strip, you know, coming in off of 40 and off of Indiana. Have you had, A, have you had any more conversations with Indiana, the ID Richmond, about bringing their, extending their water back over north this way?
Well, I guess we've at least broached the idea with them, uh, but I really, water, water, Indiana River waters, you will, right, will, they've got some root problems themselves with their sewer, sewer plant and sewer situation down there. But you know what? We met with, uh, Ken Pouse last year, and Danny Burns, the Williams County Commissioners, went to luncheon with them. I just happened to run into Ken Pouse in Washington, believe it or not, and, uh, he said, "Hey, we've got our economic development director in place." He said, "It's time for us to get together again," so...
And I will say, that was when you and I served together, that was one of the very good things, that was your brainchild, that you initiated, saying that we, we have fairly decent relationships, everybody on this side of the state line, but that side of the state line is someone who greatly missed the area, and, you know, especially that side of the county does a lot over Indiana side. Um, the interesting thing about public policy is it's very hard to apply the scientific rigors to it because it's never a double-blind experiment, there's always other strange things going on. Um, Dark, we often compare ourselves here to Dark County. Um, back in my previous job, I initiated, and we did, the research indicated that basically Preble County's bleeding out about a third of our projected sales tax revenue. Um, but in case anybody, audience is wondering, a Walmart's worth about three to five percentage points. Okay, that gives you, and looking at, once again, it's hard to compare apples to apples across every county, but you can generally tell, all right? So, um, looking at all this, uh, Green, Dark County bill only bleeds off a fifth. Now, this is where things get rather inexact, we have to kind of take more of... One of the most differences, I talked to before, to represent to Commissioner Robertson about going up to Greenville, I do know that your clerk enjoys going to Greenville to go shopping. Let's put her on the hot seat, or go to Greenville. And, um, it's because, and you look around at Ohio, in my experience, those communities with a state-certified Main Street program, and I'm very careful to use that because I've mentioned this before to communities, and they go, "Well, yeah, we have a power pot committee." I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a certified Main Street program that enables that entity to go ahead and compete effectively, basically, against Walmart. Basically, it, it gives your downtowns a means to compete effectively against a Walmart.
Can I...
Yeah.
What, like, what means do they use to compete? I mean, how would they, how would that work?
It's an excellent question. Think of it this way, Walmart has a single integrated advertising regime. They have a thematic structure as to how they advertise it. Now, I'm like, basically, a lot of people are baffled, why does Preble County need an economic development director? It's for, to attract students, it's for PR. It's to tell everybody that we, we're here. Walmart advertises heavily on a thematically consistent theme. What a Main Street program does for any downtown is it gives you a thematically consistent theme of approaching how you advertise the businesses of your downtown. It would never say, "Well, you know, you have to offer this sale, it has, it has to, you know, we want to look at your books," or anything like that. It's much more like an old farmer type co-op, uh, cooperative or collaborative than anything else. Cost on new things, probably about a hundred K.
Is that not the same thing as your Chamber of Commerce?
Nope, not all the same.
And we have a Main Street Association here in the...
Not the same thing. See, that's why I say certified.
And, and what, um, whose certification?
Organization, I, I, I would recommend, if you want to explore this further, contact Heritage Ohio. Um, their phone number is six one four two five eight sixty-two hundred. And, um, you know, in full disclosure, I used to be on, I mean, I was on their board for about three or four years there, really OOs.
So, do you have an example of someplace that is...
Greenville.
Okay, so Greenville has one of these?
Greenville, and if you really want to see the ultimate shining example of it, go up to Worcester. Um, Worcester is now building, um, small apartment complexes above their Main Street stores, and they're being filled up, I've been told, okay? I've been, they're filling up the first day they have to open houses.
Sure.
And, yeah, so they're seeing, and this goes into, you talk about economic, there's hard, let's say, let's try to put into a couple, there's hard economic development, which is much of what you're involved in here, that's the, you know, for the water, the sewer, you know, transportation, you know, the curb cuts, that type of stuff to bring in the water. There's the other type that's more soft, which is you build the right type of quality of life. What they're finding up in Greenville and Dark County, they're gaining a lot of what's called boomers. Those are young people who have left Dark County and Greenville to go away to college. After about 10 years, they, they catch back up with the skills and the knowledge they learned in the middle of school, and then come back with all that, and then opening up small businesses there in Greenville. Um, you know, and so those are some of the, you know, if you want to see an example real close, you know, that's Greenville. Um, but even going around the state, Bowlin Green is another one, um, you know, but if you contact Heritage Ohio, they'll give you, and, you know, they'll come down and they'll be able to... It's an interesting thing, this is part of the problem we have in Ohio with our highly fractured government, I want to put that part on here, is the fact that you're the main beneficiaries of any sort of a Main Street program.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, if it's a free market, then the people who are creating the businesses...
I meant from governmental agency. The governmental agency, of the governmental agencies, you're going to be the prime beneficiary of it.
Okay.
However, it's the city that has to push it. I've only known of one instance where there was actually the county initiated one. But that kind of then, we're talking about government and, I mean, you, you know, it hasn't, in here, you know, the state of Ohio's relatively modest on our state taxes, okay? We generally rank in the top 10 on our local taxes, and I can get into a large argument, every single local government group comes forward and says, "Well, it's not our fault, their fault." Okay? It's a classic bigger point, thanks, not our fault, their fault. Um, the Government General Assembly have been very gracious to accept some of my concepts at times. One of them was with the Will Government Innovation Fund, and I served on that council. Full disclosure, I did pay nothing. I don't get paid coffee, not get traveled.
What is that called?
Will Government Innovation Fund.
I think it's in here somewhere.
Yeah.
And, and we've discussed that with Kate Walsh, and, uh, I know you brought it up about the sheriff going after some of that money.
Yeah.
And we talked about consolidation with other, um...
JFSs.
JFSs or any other offices that if, you know, the state was further pushes for consolidation, at least we're in the forefront in having our discussions.
Okay. I would encourage you to, you know, um, for me, it's personally somewhat disconcerting that this was, to a certain degree, my concept, yet my home county has yet to, we're in, what are, I think, our fourth or fifth quarter of applications for this, all right? Um, you know, the, um, and I, I, there's a whole lot of variety of applications that you could do, and I'll just point out one that is fairly little hanging fruit that's left now hanging on the tree for about, I think, the past six years, and that is the Mental Health Board. And the tri-county, you know, up north, we looked at at one point in time, looked, just examining the consolidation of the Preble County mental health with the tri-county mental health. Right. The goal was, was twofold. One, to give better services, and also save the taxpayers' money, okay? I think that means as long as you keep those two goals in mind. There was many, you know, there was a due diligence committee formed, there was some backup, the ongoing calculation, so once again, in, public policy does simply, does not live as well as the scientific method, always. It's hard to do a double-blind experiment, but let's just leave it to say that, and I slept at least twice, you know, since that, uh, examination ended, but I believe there was possible savings there, several hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Three? Yeah. I, I was trying to remember how many hundreds, so 300,000, it's been six years, so we've left close to $2 million laying on the table, all right? Um, so that's the type of stuff. But the thing is, is why I wanted to encourage you all to think about is just be imaginative, which I know is a difficult thing to do with your partners, because they're not always encouraged to be imaginative, but be imaginative here. And think about, you know, what it is that you could think about, you know, the, the reality of it is, I mean, and you've always heard me say this, Commissioner Wester's heard me say this before, you know, um, serving in county commission is the hardest, most difficult job there is in Ohio's government structure. Your job descriptions and Ohioianized code, and your evaluations done by the voters, and the two are almost never in sync. Okay? And I think you may be starting to find that out a little bit here.
A little.
A little. And so the, the difficulty though is what does the code allow you to do, or does it give you some flexibility? And I'll be real honest with you, you know, and I remember from, you know, when you got sworn in, you had a nice article in the paper, you said, "You want to get more of our money back." I want to come in and, you know, say as gently as I can. If we plan a scheme of things, we are a receiver, we are, we are a receiver county in our schools. This also applies to, it's not just your county, I'm referring to our school districts, I'm referring to everything, if you look at the websites, as far as how much money we contribute in the way of income tax to Ohio, once again, we're off my dot third, okay? Um, so, in other words, the rest is, the good citizens of Dublin, and Hilliard, and Upper Arlington, and Bexley, and Indian Hill, and Madina, Madira, Shaker Heights, Gates Mills, um, you know, they've all been sending their money to Preble County. And there's been a shift that's occurred psychologically in the state since '08. And I think, you know, you two gentlemen, I think, are very active in CCAO, so you're probably picking that up from the general discussions you're getting from, you know, as you sit around the Granger's meeting, CCAO, there's been, there's been a shift in the attitude of that. Everybody's going to defend more for themselves, okay? Part of this is, and when I was in the house, I was made actually an honorary member of the Ohio Appalachian Coalition, uh, Coalition Caucus, because statistically, Preble County looks like an Appalachian county, okay? Low income, things of this nature. So our problem politically is that our representatives and senators have always been able to link arms with the people from Appalachia, what I'd call Glaciate Ohio versus, and Unglaciate Ohio, been able to link arms, and then through a series of, you know, basically through wealth exchanges, take money from the good citizens of Dublin, Upper Arlington, and send it back here. That day's coming to an end. And the thing is, the state at the same time will simply not accept you to drop below a certain level of service, okay, which is what, you are, you are an unfunded mandate, okay? You are, I think they're starting to pick that up too. You are an unfunded mandate. The state created the counties to carry out specific duties. Figure out what you can do to increase... In other words, you're doing a lot of, I commend you for the things you are doing, but my urging here is take it up yet some more notches with a little bit, almost, I don't want to say intensity, but hurry because of why I see the macro changes per...
Okay, can I bring up a few more, Gene, to, to that effect? One thing I do want for you to know is that, that a lot of folks don't want us to change our rural heritage, and I don't either. Our villages and everybody else, we are still a rural county, and that's never going to change. And let me make my case in point that you can have economic development too, Mercer County, uh, once Chris and Bob got, I'm sorry, I keep saying Chris and Bob, because I'm taking you around too.
That's fine.
I'm getting you there.
No, I'm fine.
We went to Mercer County.
I get it, I get it.
We went to Mercer County, and we talked to their economic development director and their commissioners, and 20 years ago, 15 years ago, they started the first revolving loan fund in the state of Ohio. They, they, um, worked hard, they hired an economic development director, and they consistently now have the lowest unemployment rate in the state of Ohio. I know when I came into office, that's somewhat one, one of the things that you understand a lot in this state, that everybody wanted to keep the rural county, the farmers were happy, things were going good, but at, at about the time, you know, 2000 or so, the farm incomes somewhat started to drop, the prices were low, the expenditures were increasing on everybody, and so that's why we thought we needed to have economic development in certain places in Preble County, places that have made sense. And, and we had a good zoning code. You know what?
Right.
With our zoning code, we'll find out that even northern Dark County does not have zoning.
I know, and some half counties in Dark County, and I'm completely baffled, the grand college law system always a good thing.
And a lot of, a lot of counties around the state do not have it, but you know what? I had Mari Brecher in office here, she went to the state and taught zoning. We were like number one.
I know.
Let me, let me tell you a couple other things we're number one in. Our neighborhood revitalization, that's actual dollars coming to our county. We've had six of those, and you were a part of the first couple that came into our county.
Right.
And, uh...
That was my previous organization that did that.
And we've, we are number one, along with Baymore County, and, uh, we've also been to Baymore County, and they do a wonderful job up there. They, they go through Ohio State Extension for their, um, Ohio State University for their economic development director. And when you say hurry up and get going, we, we are, we've tried to accelerate the last few years, luckily, with the help of the Chamber of Commerce and the commissioners and other governmental agencies, we got the Preble County Partnership up and going with a generous pledge by a lot of community stakeholders and a lot of public businesses and private businesses. And, uh, so they, they were asked to help step up to get education for employees, and they were the first in the state to go after a work keys program, which cost $24,000, and pending certification, Preble County's going to be possibly the very number one county to get that.
And I commend you for doing all that. I'm just saying that it's even, and a curiosity question, why did you guys leave Bowlin Minor facility for the interchange up there?
I, I wasn't a part of that because I had complex ventures on.
We just did RFPs and chose the one that submitted the best RFP.
Okay. Um, the, and you've heard me say this before, if you look now, and I'm speaking now for the, not just for the commission, and once again, you guys are, and lady, are viewed as being the leaders of the county, whether you like it or not some days, which gives you, but the thing is, if you look at this from the standpoint also for the schools, um, and I agree with you, I just want to bring up one thing, generally rule of thumb, and you can check the numbers upstairs, you know, uh, it takes a really well, large house value well over about $400,000 to pay its own way. And that's why I encourage you, yes, keep on with the zoning, keep on with your strictness for that. Farms pay their own way, very large houses will pay their own way. The problem we have though is that also is that if you build a whole lot of new, smaller homes, a lot of it be built around the county, you're going to end up, you know, you're going to end up making more cost, we won't be fiscally sustainable. And I, I agree with everything you're talking about, and I commend you for it, I'm just saying, that's all good, but it's, it's, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying that everything that you and I know, and, you know, 10 years ago, has now completely shifted on us again, and there are some vast things going on that are going to accelerate these trends, to the point that we're not in control. And I'm urging you to say, and I am here about to say, please, I mean, if you're doing these, I agree, you're doing, I heard before, you're doing all these things, that's good, just continue with those. I guess I'm in here to say, don't, you're, you're getting, as you know, you're getting a fair amount of criticism around the county for engaging in economic development at all. I'm in here to say, I guess, from the other side of the coin is increase it, encourage it more, move forward on it more, and you're running out of time.
And, and we're doing that.
Right.
Obviously, we, uh, we got a lot of pushback from the 12770 project. We're working with a lot of the communities, trying to, where there's infrastructure, because as you said, if there's not infrastructure there, you're not in the game.
Right.
You know, and unfortunately, as you said, they want the infrastructure, but they want green space.
Right. Brings my heart.
And that's, it's a tough nut to crack, but we're working with a lot of the communities now on some projects, and they're, they're small projects at this point in time, but you got to start somewhere, you got to go wherever the, uh, the infrastructure is there to support that, and that's, that's tough. That's where we're, we're continually looking how we can enhance everyone's odds of landing additional jobs.
Okay.
Um, we don't have, one area that we went to, as you well know...
I know.
We don't have, we don't have a, we don't have a community in the county that's primed to, to accept a lot of development today. I would like to say we did, but they're all lacking infrastructure. Uh, and that's, that's where, um, we've got to keep pushing forward, work with the communities. A lot of these, these programs that David alluded to have, uh, helped those communities, uh, their inventory of their infrastructure, but you still don't have that area where there's an industrial park available, and that's, that's the tough nut to crack.
Right. Um, then you brought, and I was thinking earlier when we were talking here, I was going, never gonna bring this up, industrial park. Gosh, I'm trying to think of a county I know of that doesn't have one.
Preble.
And I'm trying to think also, all counties I know that do not have their own county airport.
Well, and that's what three counties, yeah, three counties do.
Yeah.
That's the problem with, we don't have an area dedicated for that.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and it puts you behind the eight ball, because if you go to North, every county up there has that.
I know.
You know, that, I know.
Which is why, which is what was part of the appeal of the interstate complex up there, was for a classic industrial park of, how many acres are there usually? There's about what, 300, 400 acres, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you go, if you go north here, they start out at 25 to 50 acres, and they can, they can grow into whatever, and for small communities the size of, that we have in Preble County, that works out well.
Yeah.
Now, some of them have larger ones, but, uh, they, they start out small, and can be to the larger extent, depending on what that community wants, and for the most part, if you go up there, they're also very user-friendly to the community.
Yeah. Oh, we need to get one, but that's up to you guys to figure it out, I'm willing to figure it out. Um, all right, you've been very kind and gracious. Do you have any questions for me before I stick out?
We will continue to discuss the local government innovation fund, but I know there was a time when it was not as attractive because it was more of a, um, a loan rather than a grant, but I guess that has been turned around a little bit.
There's, there's, there's a grant program, the grant program is pretty well tapped out, this, but this way, if you guys want to do a loan, and I don't want to say this, I have to refuse myself completely, but I'm only one of 14 or something like that. Um, if you apply for a loan and your score is above a very low minimum, I think it's like 60 points, or something like that, you get the loan, okay? Um, you know, the, the grants are much more competitive, uh, but at the same time, I will also tell you, and you've worked with Kate Walsh in the past too, one of probably the single best, you know, state-level bureaucrat I've ever had the pleasure to work with at any point in time.
Great resource.
Great resource.
Yeah, and she'll sit down with you guys and just walk you through this, but, you know, we've had this program going on now for a year and a half, and I, whatever, whatever political shits I had left, I burned up in this thing. And, uh, it takes a long time for you to keep your political shits, you know that.
Well, I appreciate you coming in, and we're trying to do things, we've been working, um, it's somewhat challenging for us because we're, we're still behind eight ball on all this stuff, so, uh, any, any input you have, I, I welcome, uh, we're, we're continuing to, to push forward, uh, but it is challenging, and if we don't do something, we're really gonna be behind eight ball in the future, because as you've said, the dollars that we've enjoyed for years aren't gonna be coming our way because everybody's gonna be competing.
Right.
And once, as you well know, once you start competing across the board, the, the bigger teams are gonna get Ohioan share of their, their dollars.
Right. And I didn't quite completely hear your comment about why we're losing our, um, collaboration with the Appalachian delegation? It's causing fracking, they're becoming just fantastically wealthy, and their attitude is, you've talked to them up there, and their attitude is very bluntly, for eighty years, they believe, it's a fascinating thing, they believe they sent all their wealth to everywhere else in the state. They do not believe that they kept their wealth for themselves, and this time, they're not, they don't wanna share their wealth. Um, you know, and it's a fascinating thing, but we're gonna lose our political collaborators on the school, school foundation formula, we're gonna lose our collaborators on your local government fund, the townships, um, you know, and, um, by the way, have you guys looked at any sort of, um, talking about, I mentioned earlier about freeing yourselves up from state mandates, have you guys looked at, ever thought about looking at the charter county initiative?
I, I have not, uh, it's something I wanted to read up on.
Okay, there's two portions in the Ohio Constitution, there's two ways to handle it, either with a strong char, charter county or a weak, uh, charter county, both Summit and Cuyahoga have gone to a weak charter county structure. They've done so almost uniformly due to massive graft and scandals and corruption in those counties. Nobody's ever done it for fiscal purposes yet.
They've done it to become corrupt.
No, 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 because of corruption, because of corruption.
Because of corruption.
Uh, Summit County about a quarter century ago had some massive corruption going on, and, um, in Cuyahoga County, uh, just darn near everybody in their power structure has been either indicted or listed as a person of interest by the FBI.
This is before or after they became a charter?
Um, before, and then the citizens say, alright, we wanna choose a different form. The thing that I've always had a strong suspicion of though, and Ed Fitzgerald, who's the county executive up there, uh, very impressive young man, uh, to me now, a young man's anybody age fifty, which is really sad, but, um, you know, he can, he can put forward some rather remarkable claims as to cost savings he's been able to do up there. Um, and, uh, you know, if you're really interested in cost savings, I mean, basically, I just wanna, you, you've got some things, you know, if, if you ever want to explore that for a cost basis, okay? You need to start thinking about, that's, that's a multi-year project, okay? That's something that, you know, you have to get the citizens educated on, you have to become comfortable with it, the citizens vote upon it. Okay, so, um, you know, uh, let's put this way, by the time, you know, if you were to start having that conversation today, I would undoubtedly be dead of old age before the county actually pulled the trigger, okay? Um, but it, 'cause it takes a long time for the civic capacity, the civic structure of any county organization to have this conversation, educate the citizens about it, I mean, Kato's been talking about this for twenty years, I'm aware of. But what happens is, is that you get some things, uh, a pressure, an explosion so to speak, and then they, the, the switch flips. Your, my concerns, which is why I'm here, um, you know, uh, farmers don't move, okay? We don't move, we don't move to town, okay? Uh, Jan and I are there, live there permanently, and my concern is, is that your trigger is something I think that, at least two of the commissioners understand, is because of your conversations with other commissioners, your conversations with Columbus, you know this is coming, is a fiscal realignment and fiscal readjustment of the relationship between the state and the local governments, and that everybody's starting to become much more self-sufficient relatively quickly.
Well, that's also, all relevant, because we're down to a quarter, well, we used to lessen a quarter of the local government fund.
Right.
From eight seventy-something to two hundred, right, projected this year?
Right.
And the, and the casino revenue is not keeping pace with what they promised.
Right, and when you look at what Casey's done with, um, the school foundation formula, what he's doing there with that is he's slowly moving Ohio away from a system-centered funding model to a more of a child-centered funding model, and he gave a strong hint that the guarantee will be eliminated at some point in time going in the future. When the guarantee is eliminated, basically what that means for school districts with declining enrollment, they still get the same amount of money, okay? I mean, you could literally have a school system out here, and we actually have some, that have half the number of students they had there a decade ago, okay? Well, that means as Preble continues to age and place, okay? That means where, you know, our school systems are not growing, and that means that the child-centered funding model, which is, if you read Sweetie's Decision on the Roll, is what he actually said we had to move to, you're gonna see more pressure on our school systems. So, 'cause one of the key things I don't think that the general citizen understands is that the commissioners have a very strong indirect, I'm saying this with the media over there, the citizens do not always understand that the commissioners have an extremely strong indirect impact on their school finances, they just don't get it, you know, that the decisions that you folks make up here regarding various economic development issues have a tremendous impact upon that, so. So, thank you very much, you've been very kind of listening to me, and I'll get back to my laptop and keep on talking.
Thank you, are you gonna tell us anything about your appointment?
Uh, I've been engaged by a think tank of Cleveland, um, they want me to do a couple of things. One is to look at the brain drain situation, um, you know, why, okay, I'll just, you know, why do so many of our college graduates, you know, high, you know, uh, who hail from here not come back to here? Okay, um, and, uh, what can we do, what steps can we do, how do we identify them, you know? And it comes to two things, one is not just our native-born talent leaving, but also how come we're doing a not very good job on attracting those that are from elsewhere to stay here? I mean, I'll give you a classic case, Miami does a horrible child of all those wonderful, very smart out-of-state students come in, educated for four years, and leave. How do we get them to start setting up, and so for the regional basis here, it has an impact. The other thing is, I'll say this and people will just go, huh? It, it comes down to my doing, um, a, it's hard to explain to folks here, um, my doing more of a, um, uh, webcast and possible TV broadcast, uh, then you have some public policy in Ohio. It sounds really, I know, I bring it up here, and I just sound, sound really off the top of my head, so I'll just.
Well, any more comments?
Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, thanks, Jean.
You guys, as, as you always certainly say to commissioners, you have my full sympathy.
Hey, thanks for coming in, Jean.
All right.
Good to see you.
Thanks.